Good evening, welcome to the August 7, 2024 City Council Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to ask the City Attorney to provide a closed session disclosure.
Good evening, the council met in closed session this evening with the City Attorney's Office to discuss one case of anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section The council was heard a report and was provided an update on the matter and gave guidance to City Attorney's staff. There is no reportable action from the council meeting. Reflect that the meeting was adjourned at 5:50 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, we'll call the meeting in order, or ask the clerk to call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Here. And this evening, I'd like Katerina Alexander to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Solemn pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that. I'll ask the City Clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City of Roseville City Council Meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to our City Council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda and should be within the matter subject jurisdiction of the City Council. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker with a maximum allotted time of 25 minutes for the very first segment. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity to address the City Council just prior to council comments. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from discussing, debating, or taking actions on items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For those items that are listed tonight, speakers will have five minutes to provide input, input that should be relevant to the item that is being addressed. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we request the speaker please conclude their comments. The City Council encourages public participation. Persons will be warned if there is a violation of the meeting procedures. After being given a warning, you may be asked to leave the meeting. With that, lastly, if addressing the City Council, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much, Carmen. As our City Clerk mentioned, we'll start with public comments on items not listed on our agenda this evening. Anyone have a public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mike Simpson, 806 Oak Ridge. I spoke to you last month regarding the speeding of traffic on Oak Ridge Drive and asked to request to have some information returned to me. Not hearing anything, and school starting up with the school at the end of the street, I went ahead and made some calls to the Engineering Department for the city and the Police Department. Engineering got back to me about the same time I called them, and I still haven't heard from the Police Department. Engineering has told me they have no more tools in their toolbox to slow down traffic. It's out of control. They have no control over it. They have no engineering ideas, they have nothing to go on. This is what I'm told from your, this is the people that you're going to be dealing with. So if it's just on my street, you can imagine what the problem's going to be in the rest of the city. I don't know what more can be done. I know you guys are, some people are against the speed bumps. I would suggest that the city do some research and find out if there's alternative speed bumps. Maybe they don't have to be made out of asphalt, I believe maybe there's some other alternatives that can be recommended or put down. But this is not just a problem in my neighborhood. The reason I'm here is because school's starting back up, there's a school at one end, as I spoke to you last time, and a retirement center at the other end. Elderly gentlemen are on their little scooters going between the white line and the car, and people are going by 55, 60 miles an hour. I don't know what to tell you. I've lived there for 25 years, and I've just watched it get continuously worse and worse and worse. As I say, you'll probably have a better option than being able to get hold of the Police Department and find out what's going on with traffic and what their needs are, or what they can do to resolve this problem. But living in Santa Clara, this is not going to go away. Santa Clara has a lot of electronics where their money comes into them. Eventually, you're going to run out of growing area, and you're going to lose a lot of income. And I've seen that happen even in Santa Clara with the electronics. City utilities have dropped down. Nobody's cleaning the streets, nobody's taking care of properties, things are going downhill. And in my opinion, your employees that are your city workers out working in the street are your best eyes and knowledge of what's going on in this town. And if you take care of them, they'll take care of you, which you can take care of us. So I'll be continuously coming back and trying to find out what's going on here and see if I can aid anybody in trying to get this situation resolved. Please give me a call anytime, anything I can do to help, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Next, I have Jeremy Shepherd with the Placer County Water Agency who wants to talk about the Spalding repairs. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Shepherd, I'm the Director of Technical Services at the Placer County Water Agency. I'm just here today to provide an update on the PG&E Spalding Powerhouse Number One repairs. As you may or may not know, on March 8, PG&E discovered some damage in their powerhouse that needed repair. Original repairs were estimated to be completed in April. Those eventually were extended into June and then ultimately on to the end of July. As you may or may not know, Placer County Water Agency has two primary supplies of water. One is from the PG&E Drum Spalding System, and the other is from our Middle Fork Project where we pump water out of the American River. So our PG&E Drum Spalding System was basically kind of on hold, if you will, for a few months. And in response to those repairs being needed, PCWA reached out to the City of Roseville, primarily to staff initially, and then formally on April 18, requesting assistance to provide treated water to a portion of our service area. On May 6, we formally got a response back from the city approving that assistance. And in mid-May, operation staff at the city began to serve those areas for us. I'm happy to report today that as of July 30, those repairs have been made. We have restored supplies from PG&E. And as of this week, we've coordinated with your operations staff to go back to our normal wheeling operations. So on behalf of my staff, operations, my general manager, and my board, and our customers, we just want to extend our gratitude to the city and to your staff and to you guys for supporting us in this time of need. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Jeremy. Anyone else would like to make public comment on non-agenda items?
Ariel Moore, Roseville, you know who I am.
Mayor, could you just lean in a little bit?
Lean in, okay, there, there, I can hear me.
Perfect, thank you.
As you know, there are about, there are three districts that are up for election, for council election, and some of them, most of them with the people running are in District Five. And I do want to address that in terms of what is expected when we are advertising and what is not expected, that's the main thing, of what is, what is not expected when you're running for election, okay? And that's in your manual. Some people haven't read. And it pertains to prohibited signs and enforcement vehicle, prohibited signs and enforcement. And I won't read it all because it might take up my three minutes, but it does say that vehicles-
Do you want an extra minute?
I can, I can do that.
All right.
Okay. Vehicle signs, these are prohibited signs and enforcement of it. Vehicle signs, a motor vehicle may not travel on city streets or park on any city street as a sign or as the basis of a sign where the primary purpose of the motor vehicle is general advertising or advertising for a fee. The following criteria must be met when used to determine whether the purpose of the motor vehicle is a sign, and of course, that would be if the name is on there and if, whether the sign is painted upon the applied permanent, in a permanent manner, whether the vehicle is operating, in an operating condition, currently registered, and used to operate on public streets. And I will flip forward to enforcement violation and penalty. It may be unlawful for any person to erect, construct, maintain, or place a sign unless it's viable, whatever. Violations of any of the, of the aforementioned is punishable as an infraction and shall be set forth in Code 12001.0 and Chapter 2.50 for the Roseville Municipal Code. Each and every day that a prohibited sign is erected, constructed, maintained, painted, placed, or displayed in violation of this shall be considered to be a separate violation. And I'm saying that because there are people that are running around with vehicle signs and painted on their car, and that's an infraction. So that's it.
Thanks, Ariel, and you're right, you could get it done in three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I did.
Anyone else have a public comment on non-agenda items? All right, we'll have a second portion of the evening for public comment on non-agenda items. Now, we'll move to the consent calendar, and I ask the City Clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. However, we did receive several comment cards for item number 6.6, and so to be able to provide the opportunity to those folks who did submit for that item, we will pull item 6.16. Nothing else, Mr. Mayor?
And item 6.16 is?
Item 6.16 is the ordinance pertaining to the massage, sorry, massage services.
Second reading of our massage?
And approval, correct.
Okay.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, on item six for consent calendar, we do have, the City Council will consider approving items 6.1 through 6.17. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve those items except for 6.16?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
So with that, we'll bring item 6.16 for discussion, which is a second reading of the Roseville Municipal Code Amendment Massage Services. It is an ordinance number 6846. We do have several speakers who want to speak on that item.
Do we want, do we want Captain Simon and Community Service Officer Bouchard at the staff table?
We'd also want the Attorney's Office there. One way we could do this is see what the questions are.
Sure.
Right, then the appropriate staff could come and respond.
Okay. I'll go with my best pronouns, oh, yeah, I can, I can read that. Katie Ochoa. And as Katie's coming forward, there's, looks like there's four or five on this, so just encourage you to, if your point's been made by the previous speaker, to say, "Me too."
Hello, my name is Katie Ochoa, I'm the owner of A Much Need Massage. I moved here from Reno, Nevada, where we are regulated with massage. And so when I moved here to California, I was very surprised to find that there is no regulations on massage, no standards. And lack of regulations and lack of standards has put us in jeopardy and in danger. This new regulation, I support 100% because if we have any kind of standard to enforce, you know, give the police officers something to look for to help us make sure that people are legitimate in this industry. For too long, these massage parlors are doing illicit business, and we get clients all the time that are like, "Oh, well, just down the street, I was allowed to ask for this." We need to put a stop to that because legitimate businesses like my own, we are in danger from these other businesses promoting this. And so with some sort of standards and regulations, we are one step closer to making this industry safe, not just for myself as a worker, but for you guys, for the general public, to be able to go into a facility, into a clinic, and be able to get a massage and know they're going to be safe, they're going to be treated with respect, the facilities are not going to be doing anything illicit. We need to raise the standards and the regulations for massage. We need this first step in making massage a safe thing to get and to give. It doesn't just affect the public in getting a massage, it affects the workers. If you get men coming in expecting they can get it everywhere, I'm put in a position that I never want to be in, but I have been all too often. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next is Amy Franklin.
Good evening, Councilmembers. So first, I'd like to say that I have been a massage therapist. It has been since 2017, since I walked away from it. I worked for Massage N B for seven years. In that time, I loved it, it was my passion, I loved helping people. We set the standards very high in that place, there was protocols in place, we had closed doors training, it was a professional establishment. I've since had to walk away when I raised my family, I couldn't do it full-time. So seven years later, when I tried to step back into the role, they are, the massage role is changing, the permit application is changing for the recommended 500 hours for the CMTC certification. Currently, the exemptions that are in place in the proposed ordinance, they do allow a path. Unfortunately, the path might only fit a very small group who have been practicing it maybe on and off throughout their life. There are only two massage schools that are approved through CMTC right now. One is in Fair Oaks, and one is in Sacramento. To go back to school, it's anywhere from eight to 12 months, and approximately $7,900 up to $17,000. So depending on where you are in your life with what you want to address with massage therapy, it could be a hardship to go back to school to get those 500 hours that you guys are all requesting in this ordinance. My only request is that maybe you look at the exemptions as far as on a case-by-case basis with the people who are presenting an application and their history with massage. Maybe there's another avenue to say if there's a reputable massage establishment that has been upheld for at least the last five years with no problems, violations, any type of concern, look at the place where they're applying to and maybe approve it on a case-by-case basis. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Joseph McComas? McComas?
Lauren.
Or Jody?
I'm going to pass this one to Lauren.
Jody asked me to come and speak first. My name is Lauren McLaughlin. I'm CMTC certified 21787. I've been practicing in Roseville since I graduated in 2008. What I'd like to talk to you about tonight is Business and Professions Code, the BPC, Division Two Healing Arts, Sections 500 to 499, 12, anyways. Chapter 10 Massage Therapy Act, 4600.5, Item C, says it is the intent of the legislator that local governments, law enforcement, nonprofit stakeholders, massage industry, and massage professionals work together going forward to improve communication and share information to further increase the value of statewide certification. To collaborate in the implementation of this act and to develop a model ordinance reflecting best practices in massage regulation for cities and counties to adopt that will respect local control, patient privacy, and the dignity of the profession of the massage therapy. Now, I understand that the city did some outreach, it was very minimal. They contacted the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know a massage therapist that belongs to the chamber. I knew one, but she's dead. And then there was a letter sent out to those who were current in their massage establishment permit. I happen to have not been current because I'd been up in Oregon and Washington with my housemate getting a liver transplant. When I came back, I didn't realize that I was overdue. And when I called and went in, then I was told about this proposed ordinance. I asked Erica right then, "When are the stakeholder meetings planned for?" And she said, "Oh, no, we're not doing that, we're going to the council." I said, "When?", and somehow I had the impression it was supposed to be June 4. So I called in June to try and get a meeting with the mayor to discuss, you know, as it says in the state law, give some input, find out what's going on. And I didn't get a call back. I found out that, no, the meeting wasn't that night, and I was really glad because I was at the CMTC meeting the next day in San Jose. But Erica did tell me, "Oh, we're going to put it forth on August 7." So July came and went, I didn't know, and I put word out to the massage professionals in the area that, okay, be ready, August 7. Then, I didn't know, it actually came up on July 17. So you've already had a first reading, and those of us in the massage industry really have not had an opportunity to listen to what everything is involved in. We don't have a copy, red line strikeout of the ordinance as it will be, and the City of Roseville had been very good about, you know, trying to get us together, have stakeholder meetings, give us the information we need to, listen to us, improve their, their ordinance as it went on. 2015 and 17, they opted not to use CMTC certification. Now we're 15 years down the road, and you're proposing that you adopt it tonight. I really would appreciate it if you would postpone this, allow us to have, you know, a couple of stakeholder meetings, get as many people together as we can. To give you the perspective of our experience, we don't want the illicit visits either. We cringe every time we hear the word massage parlor, we cringe when we see these illicit businesses, and we can spot them quicker than anybody because we're in the business. We don't like them being referred to as massage therapists because they're not. The other part I want to talk to you about in the same code is 4603. Local government shall impose and enforce only reasonable and necessary fees and regulations on massage businesses and massage establishments in keeping with the requirements of the existing law, being mindful of the need to protect legitimate business owners and massage professionals, particularly sole providers. Now, when the council considered and changed the ordinance requiring us to have massage establishment licenses, I'm a sole proprietor, I'm a sole practitioner, my taxes are just me. Chief of Police said, "Oh, no, no, you're two people." So I do have a massage establishment permit, and it is current. But I don't know what the status of that is going to be with the way the ordinance is now because I haven't had a chance to have a full discussion, and you have had no public outreach. There are people of the public that get massages that are interested. Most public people think that we have a license by the state. CMTC is not a license, and it's not a state agency. They're confused, and they're confused by the fact that we're under the vice squad rather than the health department. So there are many things that we would like to talk about, and Amy did a good presentation on the impact financially for the massage therapists that are here in town. A woman that shares space with us has been in business for 40 years. She's not CMTC certified, nor will she ever be. Her transcripts are Southern California and Thailand, they won't be accepted. So she'd have to start over at a minimum of $10,000, five months, plus it's at least three months to get approved by CMTC. It's not going to meet your deadline. The grandfathering, I have issue with, and I see I've got like 20 seconds left.
Oh, you're like 20, 48 seconds.
I'm over 20?
48 seconds over.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for allowing me that grace, my name's Jody McComas, I'm a sole proprietor.
I am a sole proprietor, massage therapist. I specialize in pain management, orthopedic and sports work. I'm not a massage parlor. And that's just a, it's almost a vile description of what we do. I'm here to express my concerns about adopting the C A M T C period. I am currently a C A M T C member, and I will not renew my membership. I will not renew my license with them or certification. It's supposed to be a voluntary organization, and what we're getting now is it's becoming mandatory. So we're losing our right of choice. As soon as we get stripped of our right of choice as a human being, it's not a good thing. I speak with a lot of passion because I've been doing this for quite a long time. I'm here to help the people. And I'm here to help them gain their health and their ability to provide their sport of passion, uh, to themselves and their family. So a bit about the C A M T C. We have our, my, our main insurance company is the A B M P, and they have worked diligently to sunset this organization because it is not a worthy organization to represent anybody. I have that information here and the people that you can contact, and I'm gonna hand this to you, and I hope that you all read this together and converse over this. The C M T C is not transparent in any way, shape, or form. I had the opportunity to go to one meeting, and I was handed a ream of paper printed out, and I was expected to read that and understand that. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not, I'm not that kind of guy. Okay? I don't have the ability to understand those legal terms. The session was done behind closed doors. So we traveled a long way to the Bay Area to a very expensive hotel in a very lavish setting on our budget. You know, we pay those dues. The chairman, you know, he makes a, a very high six-figure income. For a nonprofit, I think that's pretty, pretty worthy of a question, okay? And he's not the only one. There's no transparency. I questioned where the money went in the meeting in my two minutes given time. It was the general fund. Almost everything went into the general fund, and I said, well, what does that mean? Well, that just means that it goes into the general fund. This is a lot of money that these people make, or this organization makes. And it's our money, and we get nothing for it. We get zero. I made a comment, if I take my tax return to my tax person and that is presented to the IRS, I would be fine. I have to itemize everything as a massage practitioner, and they have to itemize virtually nothing. There's zero accountability. And I invite you to look into that. It's unfair that we get our choice stripped. I want to continue being a massage practitioner in the city of Roseville. I am not gonna renew my license or my certification with the C A M T C. I'm not gonna be a sheep following and what feels like extortion, okay? I've been told, no, keep your C A M T C certificate because when we sunset and the state of California takes over, then you'll be grandfathered in. Well, that's a what-if. So I'm gonna make a stand. I'm not gonna re-up my certification. It's not, it's not a viable thing. I will stand by anything that's real, and it's not real. The only people that are profiting are the board members. They say they're for human trafficking now, okay? Human trafficking is astronomical in the state of California. They're taking and defunding our police departments, and they're diverting the funds, and now we're getting our fees increased in the name of supporting the fight for human trafficking. That's out of our scope of practice. It's not right. It comes back to choice, and you have the ability to, as a collective team, help us develop what needs to happen to be an appropriate, legitimate team of therapists in the city of Roseville.
Jody, you're, uh, 44. You, you've done better than Lauren here. You're only 47 seconds over, so.
I'm okay with being that. Just know that I'm grateful. I'm gonna leave these papers with you.
With our attorney over there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Anyone else, uh, on this item? Yeah, step forward.
James Malley. I, uh, have been doing massage since 1976, uh, 48 years. Graduate of a 1,000-hour massage program, uh, down in Miami, Florida. Uh, C A M T C is not a state, uh, organization. It's a private, uh, corporation, and when they started up, they said it was voluntary, and they had grandfathering. I would not have qualified. My training was 1,000 hours, uh, which is more than most around here, and I've had a lot more since then. But back then, I could not get transcripts because I graduated in 1976 from a massage school. Fortunately, because of the grandfathering, I was able to get C A M T C certified. But there are a number of people like me from other states that if they move here, even though they're very qualified, if you require C A M T C certification, uh, they would be left out. They wouldn't be able to qualify. Uh, like I said, it was the grandfathering that allowed that. Uh, I'd like to second what Lauren has said and what Jody has said. Jody is an excellent therapist. I would hate to see him not be able to practice here, uh, despite his, uh, choice not to recertify with C A M T C. I understand that choice because the way C A M T C has been with the profession has left a lot of us very dissatisfied. Incidentally, I owned, I founded, owned, and directed Healing Arts Institute, which was a massage therapy school that stayed approved. And I, uh, ran that here in Roseville from 1990 to 2005, moved it to Citrus Heights in '05, sold the school in 2011. But I have, uh, a little over 4,000 graduates in the massage therapy school, uh, that I'm representing. Uh, many of them, a number did get C A M T C certified, but because it was promoted as being something voluntary, there are a lot that didn't. And so I would like to see that you have some sort of grandfathering. I know you're talking about exemptions, but then people having to pay every couple of years to stay exempt. Uh, I would like to see it as grandfathering for people that have been in practice and, uh, that would like to continue practicing. Would like to see some provision. So I would ask, uh, Lauren quoted these, uh, things from the Business and Professions Code Massage Therapy Act. I made copies for you. Uh, I would really like if we could have stakeholder meetings, meetings with people from the massage community to discuss the, uh, ordinance and to make it, uh, workable for everybody. And I would really appreciate that consideration from you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I give this to you?
Want to give it to our attorney?
Right here. Thank you, sir.
Others on this topic? Okay.
Any close public comment?
I'm gonna close public comment, um, city manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor, uh.
Three, three distinct viewpoints in there.
I, I agree, and I think it's, it's part legal and part operational. So I'd ask Travis and Erica to come up to the staff stand. And, and the questions I heard, just to recap to make sure we're on the same page, is really, you know, history of exemptions, uh, can they be considered case-by-case? And then looking at, uh, the type of exemption, exemptions and grandfathering, uh, stakeholder meetings, and then overall, kind of broadly, what was the communication plan for this, and how was it communicated?
And one, one aspect of that, and I'm not sure I captured it quite right, but one of the exemptions is for someone, uh, where is it? What was the exemptions?
I can explain it for you if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it was, it was, I, I thought it applied to Jody in that he was in sports therapy, and I thought that that was one of the exemptions.
There are exemptions for people who have to have certification or licenses under area, other areas of the law. So like a physician or a physical therapist. Um, those sorts of positions are, they are not covered by Chapter 9.10 of municipal code. Um, so there are, if you're not a massage therapist, if you're not providing massage services, or you need other licensure, then you're not covered.
Which means you, you're permitted to.
You're essentially exempt, yes. You can continue to operate under that because you have a separate regulatory scheme for that licensure, licensure or certification.
Okay. And then Lauren was citing 4603, which is the business code. I didn't see 4603 in our ordinance. Can you?
Yeah, it's, um, so what they're citing is the Massage Therapy Act, and what is what adopted, was adopted by the state legislature, um, that basically established the C A M T C. And as part of the Massage Therapy Act, uh, the legislature specified that the C A M T C be created and established as a public, uh, as a public, uh, nonprofit, oh, gosh, nonprofit, public benefit corporation. So yes, they are a separate nonprofit entity created by state legislation. And their purpose is essentially to establish standards and guidelines for, um, certification or defining what is a qualified massage therapist in California. And yes, that program is currently voluntary, but if you read through the Massage Therapy Act, the intent is to create a regulatory scheme or at least a standard so that cities and counties and other local agencies in California can look to that and say, this is an approved person. And so the public can also very easily identify someone who is qualified and capable of providing legitimate massage services. Um, and with respect to some of this, the provisions that were cited, I think there's been a very selective reading of what the Massage Therapy Act says. There's lots of provisions, um, throughout the act that give us all the authority of what we're doing. They establish the fact that the C A M T C was created for exactly what we are trying to do here. And this idea of stakeholder meetings, um, what it, what this provision specifically says is when C A M T, when C A M T C was created, I'm sorry, I realize I'm talking fast. When C A M T C was created, the state legislator basically said, you know, C A M T C, work with your local, uh, public officials, your local law enforcement, your other state agencies, representatives of massage therapy, um, community, and come up with a template ordinance that basically then can be spread out now that we have this statewide system of regulation. There is not an affirmative obligation on us to engage in these stakeholder meetings as part of our ordinance. It's an entirely separate thing. And we did not hold stakeholder meetings at this point. We talked last time during our presentation that we did a lot of other community engagement. Um, we got some responses and addressed a lot of those questions individually. But we did reach out to every single person who has a current, um, uh, license, a business license with the city of Roseville. Um, we got some feedback, and, um, others did not provide a response, but that was the, the, um, approach that we took. And of course, uh, including the Chamber of Commerce as well, and there is more than one or zero, um, massage businesses in, in Roseville that are part of the chamber, which is good news, I think.
Who holds the license?
I'm sorry?
Who holds the actual license? Is each therapist licensed, or is this in a, let's take a real estate example?
This is where it gets to get a little bit, this is where it gets a little bit complicated. Um, we have, and what is different than sort of what the C A M T C does is we require a massage business permit. So if you're going to have a, a business that offers massage services, you have to come to the city and you get a massage establishment permit. C A M T C, what they do is they qualify individual massage therapists. And so we have this regulatory scheme where if you're gonna have a business, you get your business permit through the city. And what we are also trying to do is elevate the standard so anybody who's providing massages, whether it's their own business or an employee of another business, they are the ones that have the C A M T C certification, which basically just means you have the requisite education and training standards to provide legitimate massage services in California.
Okay. So what about a person for reasons, steps away from the business? They've been practicing for 10 years, right? They had, they, they have a family, they have a medical emergency, they have to care for a loved one. They step away from the business. Can they then come back? Are they covered by an exemption?
The current grandfathering clause that we have, because we had to draw a line somewhere, is that if you've been operating within the city of Roseville and have maintained your massage business permit, um, or you've been in good standing for the three prior years, then you fall within the exemption, and you are grandfathered in under the, uh, current educational and training standards we have, which is the 125 hours, uh, good standing, um, and I think there's a few other requirements. Um, if you stepped away and let that lapse, you know, our encouragement is to maintain that. With respect to the question about doing them on a case-by-case basis, that gets really complicated because it becomes very subjective. And one of the things we don't like doing is evaluating applications on a subjective standard because those are subject to challenge, and the, you know, they're just ripe with allegations that the process was unfair, or you're making a decision in favor of one person and not the other. And so we try to, we really did a intense evaluation of all of the metrics that we could use, and in looking in sort of some of the numbers, how long people have been in Roseville, you know, what good standing means. We thought that if someone has been practicing here or in the area for three years without any issues, that that was a good metric to use for grandfathering someone in. So to the extent that somebody's been operating here for 15 years and they haven't had any problems, and they've been maintaining their business permits to the city of Roseville, they're absolutely gonna be grandfathered in. And the reason that we have the two-year cap is because we have to reevaluate it every two years. You know, we can't have a unlimited lifetime grandfathering-in clause because in three years, if they do something wrong and we need to, you know, revoke or change their licensure, we can't just have an unlimited, um, grandfathering. That's why we need to reevaluate every two years, just like we do with anybody else's permit. Everybody has to come back every two years to, to renew.
You said in the city of Roseville, do we have reciprocity? I, I believe our ordinance is fairly similar to Citrus Heights's ordinance.
They're all very similar. I wouldn't call it reciprocity, but those things can be taken into consideration.
I've been practicing for three years in Citrus Heights. Is that, can that be grounds for being given a license?
Officially, again, it's something that we can look at.
Yeah. Those are the questions I had. Anyone else have questions? Did I cover all those questions you had?
I think so, Mayor.
Good job.
Yeah. Councilman Auburn?
You said that, um, those things can be taken into consideration. It sounds like there is a, a a way to be subjective, possibly. Or is there? So, so we have, I mean, we've heard examples of people coming in, and they've got extensive, extensive hours, or they were in the program, and then they're out for a little while, and they're trying to get back in. And it sounds like we weren't allowing special cases. You still basically have to go back to C M T C and get 500-hour certification in order to meet it. Is there, um, I'm just trying to, you, last thing, you said something about, um, those things can be taken into consideration. So do we have some softness in there, or?
Yeah, I think what I'm saying is the objectivity comes from the, if you have been operating for a certain amount of time, and you've been in good standing with wherever you're operating for a certain amount of time, then that is what the grandfathering provision is supposed to take into consideration. Um, it is, you know, really intended for local massage therapists, but it's not written in a way where we could not, uh, consider somebody who's coming from an outside place. So I'm saying the objectivity is with respect to the criteria for are you experienced and are you in good standing with respect to where you're coming from. I don't think that is necessarily set in stone within the ordinance.
Okay, so somebody could come to you. They don't technically meet exactly what's in there, but they could come and say, hey, I've got all this experience and this other stuff from another state.
They would need to meet what's in there. They would need to meet our educational requirements. That is not flexible for the grandfather.
So they have to go get the 500 hours on top of whatever that was?
No, ours would be, it, ours is the current educational requirements for Roseville. So our grandfathering provision is for anybody who meets what we require now, which is only the 125 hours in good standing. Remind me of, are there any others?
We do do a background check on these individuals.
Yes, and a sufficient background check. And that would apply to anyone across the board who's trying to do grandfathering. And when I, when Mayor asked about case-by-case consideration, it's more of, you know, where are they coming from? What is sort of the story there? But they have to meet that. That is the bright line standard. Um, and, you know, really, it's the, the three years of operating within the city of Roseville. That's where you could have some, I guess, subject. that's where you could have some, I guess, subjectivity with respect to where is this person coming from.
All right. So my worry just as a council member is if we have people in the community, I don't know the whole stories, I don't know the accuracies of all the stories, but it sounds like we may have some situations where we've got experienced people, something happened, and all of a sudden they're subject to a certification they didn't have before. And it's expensive, it's hard. We had an example of somebody who used to be a massage therapist and now is trying to get back into it, but they were out long enough because of being a parent or whatever. The only main option I'm hearing is that they've got to go back and get that certification to meet our regulations. So there's no other way for them to, I know it's case by case and I don't want to put that upon you, but is that what you're saying? Basically, there's, kind of you just got to meet it?
Yeah, if you've been out of the business for that long, then you would be required to go get C A M T C certification. And, you know, our, my thought is, or our thought is, we've talked a lot about this, is the state is moving towards a C A M T C standard, you know, whether that be through C A M T C or something else. The education and training standards are probably going to be what they are from here on out. And like we presented before, there's over 255 other cities and counties that use the exact same standard because, you know, C A M T C essentially does the job for us. They evaluate and they set the standards for what is a qualified massage therapist. And, you know, we think it is prudent to use those to help eliminate some of the issues that we're having and to make sure that when somebody goes into a massage establishment to get a massage, they're getting a massage from somebody who is well-qualified, well-trained, and providing legitimate massage services.
Okay, so I know from, we didn't have the full presentation this time like we did last time, but we have a lot of illicit activity that was happening in Roseville, which was shocking to me, I didn't know that. And so I'm absolutely for, and we all were, 5-0 vote for increasing that and making it tougher like some of the surrounding communities so we don't have that activity happening and we can deal with it quicker. I do know that if we do pass this second reading tonight, that doesn't make it so we can never adjust it again. We can always come back and make it a little bit better in the future if we find something that comes up. So one thing I would encourage is if we do end up passing this and there's an organization out there that feels like we should change something, be very specific about that and bring that and see if we maybe want to tweak it down the road. But I appreciate what we're trying to do here, just it's unfortunate that it seems like there's cases that it's hard to deal with, so.
Other council members have other questions?
The only comment I have is it sounds, this ordinance that we're looking at is very similar, has a lot of similarities to what beauticians do, nail people do, where you, you know, you have a permit to have the salon, but then each of the individual people who work there, they have their permit, they have their certificates on the wall and have them dated, so you know that they've had the classes and that they've gone through a process, that they're really certified to what they're doing.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Nothing that hasn't been discussed already. Thank you.
Okay. So Councilman Alver, you made a comment, and I don't know the basis of that comment, but I suspect our staff, it was kind of a general comment about a large number or there's a number of illegal operations in the city. Do we have any support justification for that? Do we know, do we have any empirical evidence that supports that?
We go off the information we receive out of law enforcement databases-
Okay.
-that monitor illicit activity on the internet and also from reports that we receive by citizens making complaints against these businesses.
And that's Roosevelt-specific and zip code-specific?
Yes.
Okay, and we know that, we know those facts, okay. Thanks, I just wanted to make sure that we were accurate in our statements. There's nothing else, so close, we're done with public comment. And I'll bring it back to the council for action. You know what, let me, let me just say something. I know you had asked about stakeholder meetings and I think you just got a stakeholder meeting right here, right now. So I know you'll disagree with that, but this is the second reading of this ordinance and we wanted to hear your concerns and make sure before we moved on this that we understood your concerns. So I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, on item 6.16, the city council will consider approving ordinance number 6846, amending chapters 9.10 of Title IX of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding massage services, and for a second reading and adoption. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
Sound moved.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Alver.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you, thanks for being here for public comment. Appreciate it. All right. Where are we going next? We're going to-
7.1.
7.1, boards and commissions?
Correct.
Next up will be the appointments. Library Board and Senior Commission unscheduled vacancy, where this is our Assistant City Clerk, Helen Drier. You're going to make the presentation or, okay.
Item 7.1 is requesting city council to fill a couple of vacancies we have on the library board and the senior commission. On the library board, we are asking city council to consider appointing an individual for a term expiring December 31st of 2026, from applications we received from Barbara Fulmer and Vicki Whitlock. And on the senior commission, staff asking the city council to consider appointing an individual to a term ending December 31st, 2024, from applications received from Robert Betancourt, Brian Boyd, and Jordan Benel.
No, no, only two.
That's not what I have.
That's not what I have.
No.
Senior Commission, I have Sherri Kimbrough, Cheyenne Lee, and-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hannah Wagner.
My apologies. Sorry about that. That's what happens when you take over someone else's item. Yes. Those are the library board, Barbara Fulmer and Vicki Whitlock for the library board. And for the senior commission, Sherri Kimbrough, Cheyenne Lee, and Hannah Wagner. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Now we're all on the same page. Are we voting library board first or both?
Library board first, and if you'll pass those to the city clerk, I will tabulate the results.
Public comment first?
Public comment.
Public comment, thank you very much, you know, our city attorney for reminding me. I'll open public comment.
Yeah, I'm coming, yes. Okay, I have a concern. I have a concern, thank you, have a concern in regards to the senior commission. That position has been unfilled, and this is, I'm voicing the concern and the skepticism, has been unfilled for more than a year. Okay.
Senior commission.
It had senior commission, yeah. And it's so because I serve on the Placer County Older Adults Commission and that seat also is a seat on the Placer County Older Adult Commission. And it's been unfilled, as I said, for over a year, and it just became visible in the Roseville, what do you call it, electronic, your newsletter, your electronic newsletter, it just became visible, meaning that position not being filled or filling it as of July, the 1st of July. That's a big concern for me, especially with an election year coming up and you're trying, with the elections coming up, and you're trying to now fast-forward it and fill it. So I'm just throwing that out there because the District 5 serves three, it serves three very large senior communities, and we don't want to make it look like it's tainted in one way or the other for someone getting on that. So that's my concern. Why has it been unfilled for more than a year and then all of a sudden it's, let's hurry up and get someone on here? That's it. It's my comment.
Any other public comment? I'll close public comment and ask the city clerk to proceed with a vote on the library board first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll start off with our first ballot, our ballot from Councilmember Alver. He is voting for Vicki Whitlock. Councilmember Rakucci is voting for Barbara Fulmer. Councilmember Maldonza is voting for Barbara Fulmer. Vice Mayor Bernusconi is voting for Barbara Fulmer. And Mayor Haldeshelt is voting for Barbara Fulmer.
So that will be to appoint Barbara Fulmer to the library board.
Do that motion before we vote on the senior commission?
Um, no, we're going to just do one motion.
We'll do one motion, okay. So we'll vote next on the-
Yes, so next we have the senior commission. If you could please take a vote and pass your ballots. Thank you. So for the senior commission, we'll start with Councilmember Alver. He is voting for Hannah Wagner. Councilmember Maldonza is voting for Hannah Wagner. Councilmember Rakucci is voting for Sherri Kimbrough. Vice Mayor Bernusconi is voting for Cheyenne Lee. And Mayor Haldeshelt is voting for Cheyenne Lee.
So we don't have a quorum, we need to revote.
We need to revote.
Never remind me on this vote, are all three eligible?
Yes.
Discussion if you wanted to.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone?
Cheyenne and Sherri had, each had two votes.
And Hannah had two.
Sorry, Cheyenne and Hannah had two votes.
Sherri still in there too?
This was a hard one for me. These were all very, very close. It was, it's going to be challenging.
Yeah, you know, with the, I've said this before, what the most gratifying thing is when you watch the videos and you see the passion and commitment that our folks who serve on our boards and commissions have, really do, and this one, especially with the area, people really need to have a commitment to understanding and servicing seniors.
So are we voting again or do we vote for three?
Yes.
The three of them?
Any one of the three are eligible.
Okay.
Am I, do I have that right? Michelle? Okay. Even though two of them got two.
Right.
So we'll start with Councilmember Alver, and again, this is for the senior commission. He is voting for Hannah Wagner, followed by Councilmember Maldonza, who is voting for Hannah Wagner, followed by Councilmember Rakucci, voting for Sherri Kimbrough. Vice Mayor Bernusconi is voting for Cheyenne Lee. And Vice, I'm sorry, and Mayor Haldeshelt is voting for Cheyenne Lee.
I'm sorry, Groundhog Day? Anybody?
That's the same.
Yep.
All right.
So do we have a third one?
This might be, you know, if you have some discussion and maybe to the Vice Mayor's point, you may want to chime some.
Maybe we just go with two and three, because-
Yeah, two and three and vote for them.
Is the council fine with going with the, two candidates who got two votes, Cheyenne Lee and Hannah Wagner? Comfortable with that?
It's going to move us along.
I think that's the only way we're going to do it. I guess I'm not the vote.
So please mark your ballots.
I'm not a yellow paper if this one doesn't work, okay?
On the Post-its.
Send them over, thank you.
Post-its? All right. But I want fluorescent green Post-its.
I got to move my marks.
Make that happen.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We've got a big recycling bin going here.
All right. Okay, so we'll start our, our third selection, voting for our senior commission, with Councilmember Alver selecting and voting for Hannah Wagner. Councilmember Maldonza voting for Hannah Wagner. Councilmember Rakucci voting for Cheyenne Lee. Vice Mayor Bernusconi voting for Cheyenne Lee. And Mayor Haldeshelt voting for Cheyenne Lee. With that, Cheyenne Lee receives the majority of the votes. Mr. Mayor, I will, if you don't mind, I will do the motion for this item.
Yeah, please do.
On item 7.1, the city council has voted and will consider appointing Barbara Fulmer for the library board for a term expiring on December 31st, 2026, and also appointing Cheyenne Lee, consider appointing Cheyenne Lee for the senior commission with the term expiring on December 31st, 2024. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve both appointments?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Alver.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes, thanks everybody for that thoughtful deliberation. All right, next we'll go to special requests, reports, and presentations. Item 8.1, Council Discretionary Funds, Cal Asian Foundation, and I have, Carmen, I have you down making the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, on item 8.1, we did receive a request for Council Discretionary Funds from the Cal Asian Foundation. And so just a little bit of a brief background, the Citizens Benefit Fund was established in 1993 with the net proceeds from the sale of the Roseville Hospital. These funds were placed in an account for the purpose of improving the quality of life for the citizens of the city of Roseville. And historically, the city council has granted requests for small sponsorships from Roseville Schools, nonprofits, and community organizations to support events and programs in Roseville that support increasing and improving the quality of life for the citizens of Roseville. So tonight, we did, like I mentioned, receive a request from the Cal Asian Foundation for Council Discretionary Funds in the amount of $500 in order to support their second annual pickleball tournament. We did have Mr. Johnny Foster Downs, is he in the audience? Oh, I missed, I'm sorry, Miss Johnny, I do apologize. Should the council have any questions?
Counsel have questions on this item? I'm going to open it up for a public comment, is there any public comment on this item? I'll close public comment and see, I know I have some questions, so, and some comments, so I'll ask if the council has any questions or comments.
I was just wondering a little bit more interest, you know, I see this is our second annual event. What do they use the, it's a foundation and what does your funds go for? Or, this, you know, I know this is a special event, so it's, you know, it's more, it's fundraiser, but what would, what is your benefit of having the pickleball tournament?
Great, thank you for having me and thank you for considering our request. I'm Jonice Foster Downs, on behalf of the Cal Asian Foundation. And to your specific question, we have two primary programs that this fundraiser goes towards funding, which is our AAPI Strong and our AAPI Lift programs. So the AAPI Lift is our six-month leadership program, which supports the AAPI community in supporting leadership and providing resources for community members who may be interested in entering into public service. So it's a six-month leadership program and we provide real-life insight, practical insights, how to join a local board, or really how to become a community advocate for the AAPI community. So that's the AAPI Lift, and then our AAPI Strong is our program that we do in partnership with the National ACE Program, which is to combat discrimination and anti-Asian hate, harassment, and we provide training, webinars on such topics as protecting AAPI lives, situational awareness and intervention, AAPI wellness. So it goes towards those two primary programs.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a question. Hi, Jonice.
Hi.
So because we didn't get much information about this, what is the tie to Roseville or the benefit for residents?
So first of all, it's held in Roseville at the Johnson Ranch Sports Center, and we, the foundation supports and represents really our AAPI community throughout the region, as well as those citizens specifically in Roseville. And we've been having it in Roseville, it's our second annual, and it's, it was in Roseville last time, it's going to be in Roseville, and we are looking to support the community in that way and having it in Roseville.
Okay.
Is this the first request you've made or did you make a request for last year's too?
I'm pretty, I believe this is the first request we've made.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Okay, I have a number of questions. So this is the second year you've requested. Last year, nobody, this was not brought before us last year, so. And I do have, so the citizens, the discretionary funds we have are tied to quality of life in Roseville. And we really, you know, we had a request from the Latino Leadership Council, and initially, I, I said, well, they're not Roseville-based, 'cause we look for that really strong connection with Roseville. They do, they do have, it comes to, come to find out, they do have a strong Roseville connection. One of the downtown merchants is on their board. And, and at a previous time, we had the Roseville softball, girl's softball, lady traveling out of the city. And, you know, one of the council members said, you know, we have to be careful, because there are a lot of, you know, opportunities that in our heart, we want to fund. But really, we, we only have a limited amount of money, and we have to be very specific. So, I did not, and I looked, and I talked with community members that probably are likely your, your members or constituents, and I didn't find that strong Roseville connection, either in your material that you submitted, in your statements tonight, or anywhere on the websites, or any conversations I had. So for those reasons, I'm not gonna be supporting that tonight. Appreciate the, the mission. You know, we have, we have the Pakistani Cultural, American Cultural Festival here. You know, this would be, they have a regional tie. You know, if they were to come forward with it, it might be, my, my views would be the same as that. We have a Polish festival that happens. So while there's a lot of economic development that happens from events that happen in Roseville, 'cause candidly, people understand that Roseville is, has a lot of, maybe has a lot of discretionary money that they would go to support that. But for me, there has to be a really strong Roseville tie, and it's just not economic development associated with it. So like they say on Shark Tank, I'm out.
I thank you for those comments. I will say to that, that one of the reasons that we have been having it in Roseville is to really build that community tie in the city of Roseville, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other comments?
Janice, I missed it. You, are you, you work now for the organization?
I do.
Okay, and it's, we not, I know we have a Sacramento Asian Chamber. This is different than that, this is...
So the foundation is the nonprofit arm of the Chamber.
Oh, okay. Okay, somehow I missed this coming through in my email about a funding request, so I'm sorry for the questions. I don't remember any backup material on it.
No, it was just the flyer came through. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Alright. With that, I'll ask the clerk, what is the motion that the clerk's gonna read?
Do you need public comment?
We did have public comment, closed public comment, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, the motion will be to, the council to consider approving Council Discretionary Funds for Cal-Asian Foundation for their second annual pickleball tournament, in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. With that, we'll do our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
No.
And Mayor Haldeshalt.
Yeah, for reasons previously stated, no. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next is item 8.2.
Next, we have a presentation, Summary of Federal, State, and Local Cannabis and Hemp Laws. I don't know if they use that M-word anymore. Do they use the M-word anymore?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Ryan DeVore, Assistant City Manager. And I'm here with Travis Cochran, Deputy City Attorney. If you could bring up the presentation, please. Thank you, next slide. If you recall, at the May 1st meeting, during the public comment period, a couple of young women approached the council and expressed some concerns about intoxicating hemp and its, its pervasiveness and availability in the community. And at that time, council expressed some concern about that, and asked staff to provide a presentation on the, the status of marijuana regulations, and also the intoxicating hemp in the city. So, what we plan to do today is provide a high-level overview of the history and status of federal and state marijuana laws, the history and status of the city's marijuana regulations, status of hemp, and regulatory gaps created by the 2018 Farm Bill, and potential fixes to the Farm Bill gaps. And because this is a predominantly legal question, I'm gonna pass the presentation over to Travis.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Pleasure to be back before you again. I'm gonna try to talk slower this time. I know when I get excited, I get going really quickly, so I'll, I'll try to slow down a little bit. It seems like I always get the really fun issues. So, first up, we're gonna talk a little bit about the federal status of marijuana. And I know there was a joke made about, do they use, use that term anymore? And we're using it because that's what it's referred to in our municipal code. And it's actually still referred to as marijuana on the Controlled Substances Act. A lot of California law has started using the term cannabis, but they're essentially all interchangeable at this point. So the federal law pertaining to marijuana has pretty much remained unchanged for the past 50 years. In 1970, the federal government established the Controlled Substances Act, or what we call the CSA, which provides the current regulatory framework for controlled substances. Marijuana was, and still is, classified as a Schedule I drug, meaning that its manufacture, importation, distribution, and use is prohibited by the federal government. There have been multiple attempts to reclassify or remove marijuana from the CSA, the Controlled Substances Act. All have been unsuccessful. There's still pending legislation, and bills brought every year. None of those have gone completely forward yet. So far, that has not happened, but there's plenty of attempts being made to do that. Importantly, and something that we're gonna discuss in more detail later, is the current definition of marijuana under the Controlled Substances Act. It specifically excludes hemp. And that's kind of where we find ourselves in this loophole. It's created this hemp industry, or marketplace for hemp. And that's because of what the definition of marijuana actually is. And again, we'll go into that in more detail. So first up, we're gonna talk a little bit about California marijuana laws and the, the history, which has been much more active than at the federal level. Starting in 1996, California voters passed the Compassionate Use Act, which was the first major step towards legalization of marijuana in the state of California. The Compassionate Use Act, or the CUA, decriminalized growing, possessing, and using medical marijuana. Importantly, the CUA is limited to qualified patients who have a doctor's recommendation. So you needed, you actually needing to get a doctor's note, essentially, to use medical marijuana under the CUA. And then in 2004, the California Legislature adopted the Medical Marijuana Program Act, or the MMPA. And this legislation was essentially intended to help implement the Compassionate Use Act and establish a registration and ID card system for qualified patients. So in 2016, the California Legislature adopted a slate of bills collectively known as the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, or MACURSA. These bills expanded the legalization of medical marijuana and established a statewide regulatory system for cultivation, manufacturing, delivery, and sale, again, for medical marijuana. Later in 2016, California voters also passed Proposition 64, which was known as the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act. And this act legalized what we often refer to as adult-use marijuana, or recreational-use marijuana, basically any use of marijuana other than what we used to consider, or what we consider medicinal or medical marijuana. In the following year, 2017, let's see, you go to the next slide, please, there we go. In the following year, 2017, California Legislature, once again, very busy over those years, enacted the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, also known as MACURSA. And this act repealed most of the prior marijuana laws and consolidated California's medical, or medicinal and adult-use regulatory systems. It essentially recognized that they had two, created two entirely separate regulatory schemes for medicinal and recreational-use marijuana. And so MACURSA essentially merged those together, so you only had a single regulatory scheme. And MACURSA also further reduced and eliminated most criminal penalties for marijuana possession. And so, any sort of marijuana crimes, really, if you're an adult, are now just classified as an infraction. So this slide, it just provides a general overview of what is currently allowed under California law for adult use, you know, non-medical use. An individual that is 21 years or older may possess up to one ounce of marijuana, or eight grams, eight grams of concentrate. And that's essentially a, it's synthesized into like, an oil, almost like a honey substance. It's a very potent THC compound. It's kind of a sticky honey-like substance, is the best way I can explain it. I had to look that up. And they can grow up to six plants within their private residence. For medical marijuana, an individual that is 18 years or older can possess up to eight ounces of dried marijuana, and can grow up to six mature plants, or 12 immature plants. Both adult use and medical marijuana have similar restrictions. You can't use marijuana in a public place, or where smoking is prohibited. There's restrictions on how close you can use it near schools and recreation centers. You're also prohibited from using it while driving a vehicle, or a boat, or on federal land, of course, because it's still illegal under the Controlled Substances Act. Private property owners can also prohibit the cultivation, possession, or use on their private property. So a landlord can include something in their lease prohibiting their tenant from being able to grow on the property, even though it's allowed by state law. So on the next slide, we're gonna talk a little bit about city of Roseville's marijuana years, marijuana laws during the last 20 years that sort of coincide with what the state of California has done. In May 2004, the city adopted an ordinance adding Chapter 9.95 to the municipal code, which set forth requirements for permitting and operating medical marijuana dispensaries. So this was adopted specifically in response to the Compassionate Use Act, which had legalized medical marijuana for patients with a doctor's recommendation. And Chapter 9.95 was intended to comply only with state law, and was not intended to condone, legitimize, or permit the use of non-medical marijuana. So in June of 2005, just a year later, the city then repealed Chapter 9.95 because a U.S. Supreme Court decision came out that clarified that medical marijuana dispensaries were still illegal under federal law, irrespective of California's adoption of the Compassionate Use Act. And the city responded by repealing Section 9.95 that had previously allowed and regulated medical marijuana dispensaries. Just a month later, the city then adopted another ordinance explicitly prohibiting the operation of medical marijuana dispensaries within the city. In 2010, the city began litigation against two medical marijuana dispensaries that were operating within the city. The city at that time attained preliminary injunctions against both, thereby enjoining them from continuing to operate. But both of those dispensaries appealed the injunctions that the court issued, and they continued to operate despite those. Ultimately, one of the dispensaries settled with the city, and agrees to, agreed to close, and also to drop their appeal. And the other ultimately ceased its operations, and failed to move forward with its appeal of the city's injunction. So those appeals were never heard by the Court of Appeal. And both of those dispensaries just voluntarily closed shop. In June 2012, the city added Chapter 9.96 to the municipal code. This section prohibited all outdoor cultivation of medical marijuana, and imposed some restrictions on indoor cultivation. This was also intended to be narrowly tailored to a patient's right to grow, possess, and use medical marijuana, and it did not expand upon or allow cultivation of adult-use or recreational marijuana. And then in March of 2016, Chapter 9.95, which prohibits dispensaries, and Chapter 9.96, which regulated medical marijuana cultivation, were moved to Chapters 19.62 and 19.63 of the municipal code. And this was essentially done to give the city better enforcement through land use and zoning principles. But no substantive changes were made to either of those regulatory schemes. In August of 2017, the city adopted an ordinance amending both Chapters 19.62 and 19.63 of the municipal code. This was in direct response to the state's legalization of adult-use marijuana at the time. These amendments to the municipal code provided that adult use would be regulated in the same way as medical marijuana, and it did not otherwise expand beyond what state law required for personal use or marijuana. So again, because the state essentially created a single regulatory scheme for recreational marijuana, medicinal marijuana, we followed suit and adjusted our ordinances, so they're essentially regulated in the same way, and specify that we allow what state law requires us to allow, but nothing more. So this next slide just provides a general summary of Roseville's current marijuana regulations. The city allows what state law requires, as I said, what state law requires us to allow with respect to personal cultivation, possession, and use. But it does not expand upon state law. Dispensaries are currently prohibited. We don't allow retail sales within the city of Roseville. All outdoor cultivation is prohibited. So whether it be medicinal marijuana or recreational-use marijuana, you can only grow indoors. And indoor cultivation and possession is limited to, again, state law. We don't expand upon that. So now we're gonna switch gears a little bit and discuss the laws and some of the current issues pertaining to hemp. In 2018, the federal government adopted the Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018, also known as the 2018 Farm Bill. And so if any of you have heard about conflict between marijuana and hemp industries, or issues with respect to intoxicating hemp, these issues were essentially created by the enactment of the 2018 Farm Bill, and what they did with respect to the definition of marijuana. So what happened is that the 2018 Farm Bill removed hemp from the definition of marijuana with the intent to allow hemp to be legally cultivated for its commercial and industrial purposes, like the manufacture of rope, clothing, paper, and other common items that can be made from hemp. Marijuana, which is defined as strains containing Delta-9 THC in levels above 0.3%, remained a Schedule I drug on the Controlled Substances Act. And this is what created essentially the loophole at the federal level for regulating intoxicating hemp. And we'll go into that loophole a little bit more in these next slides. So the problem is that hemp also contains THC compounds, including Delta-9 THC, but in lower quantities and concentrations than normal marijuana. Hemp also contains other count, other compounds like cannabidil, cannabidial, cannabidol. I don't know how to say this word, it's...
You're doing great.
Got on Google like 100 times beforehand to actually have them pronunciate it, and like, all of them were different. So we're just gonna go with that. But it is essentially what we refer to as CBD. And so hemp contains these compounds that can be synthesized into THC isomers that also have intoxicating effects. And so because the 2018 Farm Bill did not specifically prohibit synthesizing hemp CBD into THC, the loophole suggests that THC isomers derived from hemp can still be produced and sold legally under the hemp laws, so long as it's derived from hemp and does not contain more than 0.3% Delta-9 THC. Sort of in layman terms, hemp is not classified as marijuana anymore. They removed the definition. But you can synthesize hemp in a way for it to have an intoxicating effect.
Is that Breaking Bad?
Subler, yes. And of course, this created really a largely unregulated market for intoxicating hemp. Because if there's something out there that can get you intoxicated or high, there's gonna be a market for it. Let's see, so, I think next slide, oh no, this is the right slide, thank you. So again, 2018 Farm Bill loophole created a marketplace for hemp products, and this has grown into a multi-billion-dollar industry. This is not just kind of mom-and-pop shop. This is a, a big deal across the U.S., this industry that's been created. And many of these products contain intoxicating levels of THC, and they're packaged as edibles, drinks, concentrates, vaping cartridges, you know, sort of anything that you can ingest, ingest. This market has largely evaded regulation, because hemp by definition is not marijuana. There are no current limits on the amount of Delta-8... There are no current limits on the amount of delta-8 THC. The products are poorly manufactured and mislabeled. They're often marketed at, you know, teens and young adults. And some of the manufacturers of these items essentially steal legitimate brand names and packaging to confuse their customer base. A lot of times they're kind of packaged as marijuana or something else when they are not actually that product. And this has become a concern, you know, as we heard about it the May 1 meeting, because there have been several incidents, I'm not aware of any in Roseville, but across the country, there's been a number of incidents involving young teens and adults consuming these unregulated intoxicating hemp products, and they've had issues with overdoses, illnesses, sicknesses, kind of like food poisoning, things like that. Really due to the fact that people aren't aware of essentially what they're ingesting. So the loophole in the 2018 Farm Bill has garnered significant attention, and there are a number of ongoing efforts to close it. In March of this year, the California Attorney General's Office sent a letter to Congress urging amendments to the Farm Bill. This letter was joined by 20 other attorneys general from a variety of states. This was essentially a bipartisan letter, because it was red-blue states from all over the place, that wrote to Congress and said, please close this. This is, you know, a nightmare for us to try to deal with because there's no regulation. And in April, the governor also directed CDPH and ABC, the state departments, to issue notices to their various license and permit holders addressing the distribution of or selling of intoxicating hemp products. So like if you have a liquor license, ABC sent out a notice saying that we're going to pull your liquor license or it's going to be implicated if you're out there selling illegal intoxicating hemp products. In May, the Federal House Agricultural Committee also passed a new version of the Farm Bill that includes a provision federally banning intoxicating hemp products. So this would close the loophole. And while there appears to be significant support in the House, we're still waiting to see what the U.S. Senate's position is and what they will do, if anything, because of course such legislation at the federal level would have to be passed by the House and the Senate. Next slide, please. Thank you. There is also a bill at the state level that has been introduced that would close the Farm Bill loophole. California Assembly Member Aguirre Curry has introduced legislation that would prohibit products with synthetically derived THC and also prohibits hemp products from being labeled and advertised as intoxicating. This bill passed in the House in May 2024, and it's currently with the Senate Appropriations Committee, being considered by them. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the possibility of a local ordinance to address the Farm Bill loophole. Staff is aware of at least one template ordinance that has been prepared and is circulating through the local government sector that addresses intoxicating hemp. And we're aware of at least one city in California, I believe it was El Cajon, that has recently taken steps to amend its zoning code to prohibit the retail sales of intoxicating hemp products. And with that, we're more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before we ask questions, I want to compliment you on a very comprehensive and concise review of like 25 years of constantly evolving landscape of marijuana versus hemp.
Thank you, Mayor. That may be the first time in my career anybody's ever called me concise, so it's very much appreciated.
Okay, well, we'll take that up later. Any questions of council? Councilman Albert?
On page 18, it talks about industrial hemp products, industrial hemp, industrial hemp. What is non-industrial hemp? What's the difference? Sorry, I hope I don't stump you on that.
No, no. So industrial hemp is essentially like things used in everyday life, products, rope, clothing, that sort of industrial-type manufacturing. Anything else would, you know, hemp is used for ingesting or becoming intoxicated.
Fuel parts.
Yes.
Is there a non-industrial hemp?
Well, yes. Currently, that's the market that's been created, is the using it in products that are consumed by individuals to become intoxicated. So anything that's non-industrial hemp being used is essentially what this marketplace is. It's the ingesting of intoxicating hemp products.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
How is it doing? You were saying where it's, where it's doing, where these bills are in the legislature. Does it look like it's going to be beginning in the Senate? You said it went through one house and...
Yeah, so there was, at the federal level, there was a lot of support from the House. It passed overwhelmingly. The Senate has not released their own, so each house is working on their own individual version of a new Farm Bill that has to be passed. The House has approved theirs. That includes closing the loophole. The Senate has not issued their draft bill at all yet. So we really don't know what position they're going to take, which is complicated. At the state level, the legislation, I believe, also passed in the House overwhelmingly. And now it's being considered by the State Appropriations Committee. It was at a different committee prior to that, and I think it was passed by that committee with fairly significant support. So again, I can't predict what will happen, but it seems like it is going through the state legislature at least fairly efficiently with a significant amount of support. But of course, it would still have to be passed by the California Senate in addition to being signed by the governor.
Okay. Does it look like, I know this is always a crazy question, timing? Is it something that looks like six months or a year? We'd know or...
We would, I think the last day to sign legislation or to get it to the governor is end of September timeframe. My policymaking is...
Probably the end of August and then...
Yeah, we're close then.
Yeah, so we're getting fairly close. And we would know by, you know, October and certainly the end of the year whether or not that's going to go into effect. And typically, unless it's adopted and effective immediately, it becomes effective January 1 of the following year.
Good, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Go back before the hemp presentation to the marijuana presentation. Your last slide there, it, last bullet on the last slide, said that we, Roseville, currently allow what state law allows related to the marijuana. And I'm just confused because I did some research on this just to kind of see where we are, you know, a city of our size and kind of what this looks like geographically. And my understanding is there's a couple dispensaries, one specifically in South SAC. So I'm just a little confused with the wording of that, so I'm hoping maybe I heard it wrong or I'm reading your bullet wrong, because when it says we allow what state law allows, if state law is allowing in other cities, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying.
That's a fantastic clarification. I'm happy to do that. What I meant to say or intended to say is we allow what California law requires us to allow. So we are required to allow people to personally grow, cultivate, possess, and use marijuana, either recreationally or for medicinal purposes. We are not required to allow retail sales. So that's sort of the difference. California law doesn't require that. It allows that, but local agencies still have the authority to determine whether or not they want to allow retail sales within their community.
So what's the difference between a requirement and local control?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this, this kind of reminds me of the conversation we had a couple of years ago about flavored tobacco and advertising and making sure that, you know, our high school youth are not exposed and, and you know, you've got these different levels of regulation and you, my ear is getting tuned to what I think Councilman Mendoza says. It's okay to use it in this, adult use in the City of Roseville is permitted. The growth in the city, the growth of marijuana indoors in the city is permitted.
Correct.
Colfax can have, you can order from the dispensary in Colfax.
Yes, under recent legislation, SB 1186 and other things, retail delivery is permitted.
Right. So I guess, you know, the question is, and then you've got marijuana, you've got the adult use, you've got the cultivation, and you have CBD. And I think in some states, you can get a CBD additive to your coffee, a little 0.03 or, is that correct?
Yes.
At least in this, at least in the District of Columbia, you could a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Theoretically, you can get CBD here too, as long as it's not considered marijuana. And again, it's just all very technical with respect to what the THC concentrations and everything else are, because CBD in and of itself is not necessarily intoxicating. But yes, you're absolutely correct.
Breaking Bad reference was intentional because if I'm understanding, not a chemist, if I'm understanding, young scientists can convert that non, that CBD or that hemp into an intoxicating product.
That is correct.
And so we have a highly regulated market with marijuana, cannabis, and then we have an unregulated market. I have understood from reliable sources that fentanyl is sometimes, or marijuana in the unregulated world is sometimes laced with fentanyl. Do you have any knowledge or experience of that?
I personally don't have any knowledge or experience of that.
Yeah, no, I don't like to have, you know, just, and it's not to get the person addicted to the marijuana, it's then to get to, to the, to the fentanyl, get them addicted to the fentanyl. So in my mind, there's the adult use and then there are regulated and the non-regulated, non-regulated use that is happening and potentially happening with our youth.
I wanted to piggyback on what the mayor's saying, because I think it was two months ago when we originally, I think Mayor Haushelt and I actually were the ones that asked to have this brought forward or, I don't know how we worded it, but my original concern was when I walked into the Bevmo a mile from my house and saw these drinks, these cannabis drinks, sitting next to rock stars and other sorts of energy drinks and being labeled and produced as such and targeted as such. And I saw, with my own eyes, I saw teens in there buying them with their energy drinks. And one of the clerks rang them up as energy drinks, and these children were far from legal age. And as I went back into Total Wine and More, and I went into Walmart and other retailers in Roseville and walked around, I became increasingly concerned, much like with the vaping that we dealt with many years ago, that this is becoming more and more prevalent and the levels in those cans and some of these other products and who they're being targeted to and how they're being consumed. I think me as a council member, and I can't speak for my other electives, but anybody who's tasked to represent their community and try to help make it better and safer would be remiss by not acknowledging that these items are out there and we should be, it's not our job to regulate it, right? That's a state problem. That's that there's other agencies that do that. But acknowledge that it's out there and know that it's becoming increasingly more available. And as we look at this and whatever lens we look at it through, keep that in mind. Because I think that there's a lot out there that we're not really even cognizant of if you're not looking for it. But people know where to find it if you know where to look, like anything else, so.
I don't have any other questions at this point. Anybody else have any other questions? So I'll...
No, I'm just glad that that legislation is coming to a head here in Sacramento. Because, because you know, like you said, there's, there's good hemp and the one, what is it, industrial, the industrial one is intoxicating. And the other one, you could make ropes, you know, I mean, there's this, you could do stuff without, without being high.
Take enough of one, you can do the other.
Just don't chew on the rope. But you know, you know, it's like, my God. But you know, I think this is really important.
That's the new motto.
Use and bad, good use.
Now for approved.
Good use and bad use of things, and I think this is a good thing.
Something to open it up for public comment here.
I'm done.
We're going to open it up for public comment. Kerry Welch.
Good evening, Councilors, Mayor. Let me pull this up. Thank you for the important discussion on intoxicating hemp and the dangers of the proliferation of these products that have on the public health and safety and specifically on our youth. My name is Kerry Welch, and I am an owner of a cannabis storefront in my community in Chico. I appreciate the opportunity to share my story of how a regulated approach to retail cannabis has bolstered public health and safety and resulted in meaningful financial support for youth education and drug prevention in our community. When cannabis was first contemplated in Chico, the central concern was how this new industry could impact our youth. Yet our city understood that the best way to combat the illegal market and in turn youth access to these unregulated products was to implement a regulated cannabis, legal cannabis program. We were selected by the City of Chico after extensive vetting and analysis by senior municipal staff, including the police department and many more. Today, we contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars annually in tax payments to the city and over $100,000 to local nonprofits with the focus on prevention and educating our youth. The community benefit funding, my favorite part, has provided vital resources to support community priorities ranging from the implementation of an accredited youth drug prevention program through the Boys and Girls Club to funding our local scholarship programs for high school seniors and supporting veteran housing and law enforcement activities. The cannabis industry has proven that they can safely and responsibly integrate into a community while financially supporting the pressing needs and priorities of our most promising residents, our youth. With the rise of easily available intoxicating hemp and the lack of education and understanding of what these products mean for youth and adults, it's critical that local government take action to protect its youth and the public at large. Understanding that demand for cannabis products is here to stay, I urge the council to consider a retail cannabis pilot program that would help fund enforcement to crack down on the proliferation of intoxicating hemp. In addition to the tax revenue, this program would provide significant community benefit funding to support youth drug prevention and education efforts. As a woman in recovery with over 14 years, I understand this nuanced conversation, and I believe it's important to start the conversation on the benefits of a regulated approach to addressing these issues while providing safe access to legal, tested cannabis for adults. I hope my experience can shed some light on some of these opportunities that a regulated approach to cannabis can provide to enhancing our public health and our safety while supporting education and prevention of our community's youth. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Devin Wardlow, and I have spent my 15-year career working in public policy, starting in the White House and now at California, one of California's most trusted cannabis retailers. I am very passionate about the importance of thoughtful regulatory infrastructure that shapes healthy and happy communities. I want to thank city staff and you as the council for this important discussion on the dangers of intoxicating hemp and for the update on the status of the legal cannabis industry in California. Given the rapid rise of intoxicating hemp, many responsible operators are engaging in these conversations with local leaders and communities across the state on the importance of educating the public on the dangers of high-dose intoxicating hemp. What many cities have found is that one of the best tools to combat the illegal market and unregulated products is through a regulated approach to the issue. Through regulated markets, local communities are able to enforce against bad actors, generate hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars in annual revenue, and obtain funding for vital community programs, including youth drug prevention. Cities throughout the state are grappling with this nuanced discussion on how to address unregulated products. The rapid rise in intoxicating hemp products signifies that the demand is clearly there. In my experience, a strictly regulated and limited cannabis retail program serves as a critical partner to cities in supporting necessary public safety needs while providing significant ongoing funding to local youth drug prevention and education efforts. I respectfully ask members of the council to consider the benefits of exploring this issue further, including through such discussions as a potential pilot program that creates access to safe, tested, and regulated products while curbing the illicit market. Thank you for your time and engagement on this important topic.
Thank you very much. Others, are there others? Any other public comment?
Muriel Moore, yeah. I want to counsel, speak to something that Travis had mentioned in his presentation, that if it can be inhaled, digested, or shot in one's arm, that the problem of alcohol or any kind of drug use is going to be virtually impossible. So my thing, and this is just in thinking about this, is that we put, we tend to spend a lot of time, one does, in terms of the regulating. Every time something, you know, there's a loophole somewhere, so we got to change the law and regulate again. And it's like banking, you know, every time there's a big whatever, then we got to change the laws and set up a new regulation for it. When do we start to hold those that are doing the inhaling, ingesting, and shooting up more accountable for their actions instead of the programs of trying to, to educate because they know exactly what they're doing? This is my perspective, okay? That more emphasis should be put upon trying to make sure that if you break the law, you don't follow the regulations, that you're held accountable, you know, at some level. This is not to say to wipe out the market, but if you're breaking whatever the law is at that time, you're held to that. No ifs, ands, or buts, and that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Any other comment? All right, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for... All right, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for any additional questions? Comments?
The only comment that I'm thinking of is that, a concern that, uh, regulated stores have how much crime they have or problems with people wanting to rob them or seeing if, how much money that their, you know, cash money, because a lot of their product, things are done by cash, of, 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 of problems of, of safety for the community.
Are you asking like stores like Three Monkeys, which is a vape shop, here?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if there was a, a store, a store in Roseville that sold mari, had, there we go again, marijuana or whatever we want to call it, concern about just the security and safety of, of having that kind of establishment in, 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 in Roseville, in any place.
No, I understand.
I had a comment, and I apologize, Mayor, it hadn't occurred to me until, um, one of the speakers, um, mentioned it on the pilot program, and actually it was a private question for our attorney, so you had mentioned, so it was SB 1186 on the retail delivery, and I, and I understand how that works, I know that's, that's already happening, but was it, I think it was Senate Bill 94, I may have that wrong, but the, the bills are relevant. My, my question is, the pilot program, and I'm not sure where she, where she was going with this, but is, are we looking at state legislation coming down, I mean, because there was a mention and talk up, back up here on the dais, and I think that it was end of the year, on, on, on a couple of these bills, and you had mentioned that there was one, possibly two, working its way through, was it the state assembly or state senate or?
Senate.
Was it senate?
It's almost done.
So, I mean, is, do we expect that to hit this year, next year? I'm, I, I guess where I'm going is, I mean, do, are we better off with the local control setting some up now to head that off, or is this gonna be one of those situations where the state's gonna come in and force our hand on this? Or do we have an opinion one way or the other on that?
I, I wouldn't say that I necessarily have an opinion about that, I don't think staff has an opinion about that, um, the, the timing is hard to predict, because again, we can't say what the legislature is gonna do. I would say that there is a better chance that we'll know about the state legislation, because it just moves more quickly, the fact that it's already passed our, um, the state assembly and is with the House or the Senate Appropriations Committee, we'll certainly see some sort of finality with that by the end of the legislative session, you know, which is the September, early October timeframe.
Okay.
At the federal level, the 2018 Farm Bill, I believe, has a requirement that it be renewed every four years, maybe every five, we're already a year late on that, um, and so, you know, it could be a while before the senate releases, releases their draft, I wasn't able to find any additional information on the status of that, um, but certainly, that could be mu- much further out, um, I, I don't think that will be done in the next few months, I mean, I think that's probably six months to a year out, if anything, but again, I'm just sort of speculating, we don't have a lot.
Oh, and, and the reason I'm putting you on the spot is, Vice Mayor Bernascony and I, we serve on the Law and Regulatory Committee, and I wanted to put an asterisk next to a few of these items to, to keep a lookout for information that may be coming to us, especially if there's bills working their way through, which could be helpful to us a, as a council, um, you know, if we have to readdress this issue, and then on the pilot program, I wanted, I wanted your opinion on that, because I wanted to see if we did the pilot program, does it hedge us in a better position with these other things coming down? Does it make a difference?
It, it, let me.
I mean, I, I don't mean to, you know, put you in a corner.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just trying to.
I'm just trying to, you know, I'm, I'm always, I'm Catholic and cautious, right? So, if I, if I can sit here and try to.
It, it, it's complicated, because, you know, we don't know if the legislation's gonna be adopted at the state or the federal level.
Okay.
And while we probably have a good idea of what that legislation is gonna say, we don't know for sure, because they always, you know, fine tune things and make tweaks before it's done, um, and so theoretically, could the city adopt an ordinance, um, you know, sooner than we'll see state or federal legislation? Absolutely, you know, it requires, you know, two readings, um, and then it goes into effect thirty days later, um, so the answer to that question is yes, it just becomes complicated because you're tracking multiple different things, and then if those don't add up, you know, after they all get passed, we have to start making adjustments or there's conflicts. So, sometimes it's kind of hard to curb your bets and do something, because you never know what the state or the feds are gonna do.
Understood, I just wanted to put it out there and see what you had, so, thank you.
And I want to pick up on that, because I think we had an example earlier this year, and I think you worked on this, Travis, uh, certainly our city attorney's office worked on it, with a syringe exchange program, where we defined the playing field.
Right, right.
And the state was ready to come in here and just, you know, permit that, and so, to me, I draw a very analogous line of local control here in getting ahead of something that may come out of left field like that, where the state will assert that they have, they have, it's their area of jurisdiction, so I think we want to, in my, my personal view is, we want to get ahead of that, and we want to protect the most vulnerable in our community, uh, those who, you know, those, the youth in our community, um, you know, maybe some adults too, who are vulnerable, but I think we really do want to, we do that, and, and it's, again, for me, it's almost similar to the massage ordinance earlier this evening, where we want the regulated community, we want folks who are consuming to feel like they're safe, and, and to me, that means that we're in a, we're in a regulated community.
Be using one as an excuse to do the other, um, I would like to see those separated, and so I just don't see the nexus for protecting our kids from intoxicating hemp and allowing dispensaries in the city are connected, so, just want to throw that out there.
That's a fair point, and one I grappled with as well, how do you, how do you put this up, and again, this goes, for me, it goes back to the local control issue, we may not have, we may not have a say in it, unless we pass an ordinance and, and have a limited, a limited, the model ordinance, a limited way to fund it by taking away the state's ability to just say, yeah, anybody, anytime can set up, just like the massage ordinance, we heard the state's massage ordinance earlier, and we have a local ordinance, and, and so for me, the logic is, the best, the best legis, the best legislation and laws are local, and we represent our, and we hear our citizens and we represent them, we can protect them, so.
I agree with you, I think we've made a good decision by not allowing dispensaries in our state.
I, I totally agree with Councilmember Albert, uh, that's two, two totally different things, I, I'm really cautious and real concerned about, uh, when you want to make money and have an extra funding come in because of, of dispensaries, I think that's, making money off of something like that is, is, is wrong, um, I think it's, it's a dangerous, dangerous precedent, it also reminds me of the old days when they started the lottery in California, it was always gonna make money and help the schools, and, you know, it, it didn't work out quite that way, way, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to try to do something right on a wrong idea, um, I think, um, that's real frightening to me, and I think that opens a door, uh, for a lot of other problems, like I mentioned earlier about, uh, concern about robberies, not taking care of them, I, I don't think we need to get into that, but I agree with my fellow council members about keeping, being cautious, seeing what the new legislation is, and, and being, like, jumping on it when we can, but I don't, I don't want to be starting a pilot program of having dispensaries, I don't want to be doing, I, I, I think that's a wrong approach.
The state may put that on us, if the state says you must allow dispensaries in your city, then absolutely we want to take control of that, I, you know, I absolutely don't disagree with that.
But defer to them, let's see what they come out with.
Well, I don't want to defer to the state.
I understand.
No, I don't want, I don't want to have a period.
I don't want to defer to the state, I want to take control.
I want to keep local control, but I, I think what Scott's saying is, it might be forced on us anyway, right? If, if the state comes out with it.
We're a charter city.
Right, okay.
Right.
Doesn't preempt us from state law.
What's that?
Doesn't preempt us from state law.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm struggling with here, which is why I was asking for the clarification.
Yeah, no, I get it, no, I get, no, I get it, right, I mean, so it doesn't prevent, it doesn't preempt us from state law? So, the syringe program was.
Time, place, manner on it, but we could not completely exempt ourselves from it, but any more law, I'm gonna defer to our attorney.
There you go.
And I don't want to belabor this, because I wanted to go home at seven thirty, actually, but you just said it, time, place, and what was the third one?
Manner.
Time, place, and manner, and I think that's what's before us, should we explore and have in our pocket a time, place, and manner? Should the state fail to come through with the legislation on intoxicating hemp? Should they begin to get more aggressive with the, with the cannabis and, and then usurp it? So, time, place, and manner is exactly, exactly what I'm hoping that we will explore.
But it looks like we may have some state legislation coming in.
But will that dictate time, place, and manner?
There, those are different, those are, what's before the, the state is a, a close in the Farm Bill loophole?
Yeah.
Right, and there is nothing currently in state legislation that is gonna mandate retail sales, and if there were something to come before the state, I am a hundred percent confident that we could move faster than the state in that instance.
Okay, and in preparation for moving faster than the state, should we explore what Chico did?
That's not a question for me, Mayor.
Well, it's a question I put out in front of everybody, so, I think we should, so, I'm, it's, we should be, we should go in with knowledge, so.
What are we being asked here tonight?
Well, it's an informational item tonight, but that is something that could come from this.
We should, what we're being asked is, what are the next steps, if any, and what I'm saying is, we should explore and get more information on what Chico did, and see if that's something that we can have in the quiver, uh, should the state get out over their skis and be counter to what we want here in Roseville, so.
Is there a way, because I heard a consensus up here, or at least three of us, um, to kind of dovetail on what the mayor's saying, to, to separate the two, you know, with the whole youth protection, you know, um, you know, that whole piece, and then the dispensary piece, because I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing some agreement on one and some maybe hesitation on the other, but it seems like if they're packaged together, that it's a hard no, but I think some of us are, are all in, you know, on the, on the protection and the, and the youth and all of that, so I just, I don't know if that's something the council is willing to consider, similar to the vaping, I think that that's a targeted audience, that's a targeted market that, you know, we could probably easily, I don't know, agree on, for lack of a better word, um, but I think if it's not separated, I, I don't, I don't know where this goes, even though it's informational.
I could propose that, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm expecting to know in October where, where this goes at the state level, uh, and we could certainly, we, we watch all legislation, we have a whole team devoted to that, as you guys know, uh, I could certainly be happy to bring that back, uh, in October, November, when we find out what the state actually does, and kind of have some recommendations based off of that.
Okay.
In closing the Farm Bill.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yep.
Comfortable with that.
I'd like to.
I think that.
Because then I think we have more certainty, right?
Well, we, yeah, all right, so let the rhetoric reflect that we'll, we'll come back in October after the governor has laid down his pen, and, and, and maybe the United States Senate has closed, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll come back in October.
Be here before you know it.
Let me lead it.
I know, sorry.
All right, thank you, everybody, for.
August is almost.
Everybody, that's an important discussion, especially, and, and I didn't even get into something that my son made me aware of, that's, is you can walk, go down the street and see Three Monkeys and see something called kratom, which is an opioid-like intoxicant, which has no business being in Roseville, so.
Like Kraken?
Uh, no, it's not like Kraken at all, it's pretty serious stuff, so, anyway, all right, we're, we're at that point in the agenda, we're gonna open it up for a second round of public comment. We, okay, no, on non-agenda items, okay.
Non-agenda items, yeah.
I'll ask the city manager if he has anything else, has anything for us?
No further, Mayor, thank you.
And the city attorney?
Me, thank you.
And Councilman Albert, would you start us off?
The Sacramento Basin-Wide Air Push and Control Council, uh, numerous times up in Northern California, we've got a fifty million dollar state grant for biomass, and it can use for our forests and forest fires, um, helping rid that later, but I thought that was a pretty cool thing that they got put through. Our, our EDAC board, um, we welcomed in Andrew Tagg, which we had voted in the past, and he's filling a, a bank seat on that committee, we appreciate that, and then National Night Out, I know we were, we're all pretty busy last night, and I was on the west side, um, the Carmel and Wood Creek West Apartments, Ex-Minister Lane at the club at West Park, huge group there, and then record turnouts for the West Park and Fittament Farm Neighborhood Association event at Festerson, and record turnout for the Soler Creek View and Silver Springs Neighborhood Associations, and it was great just to see the police and the fire, everybody was so active, and the community just really had a great time, and so, um, again, I know everybody's doing the same things out there, but it was, it was nice just to see all the community members out there having a good time together, so, that's all I have.
That's Mayor Bernascony.
Not much to add, other than a big thank you to our Roseville Police Department and our Roseville Fire for all the coordination that they had last night on National Night Out, they were everywhere, um, and I had the pleasure of joining Captain Simon and Chief Barti for a little bit, Few in Sun City, Veterans Park, and residents overwhelmingly really love our city, and it was great to be able to see them.
Councilwoman Rakuchi.
Well, I'll start with the National Night Out, just as everyone else has, it was really a pleasure to go all over Roseville, different areas, and just seeing people being out, and despite the fact that it was so stifling hot, they were still, and most people didn't pass out, so that, I thought that was good.
Victory.
But, uh, it, it was, it was really nice, some of the places I've been, I've second or third time been there, and, you know, at these sites, but there are a few new sites, and, uh, just seeing people enjoying being together, asking questions to the police and fire, and of course, Butter, the, the companion dog, got a lot of, uh, looks and pets, and, and so that, that was nice, it was, it was just, it was an opportunity for the community to ask questions and, and want to see the fire truck, the kids, and, and just be a part of everything, and, uh, in a very friendly, happy time, so that, that was really good. I did go, attend to a meeting for Northern California Power Association, it was held in Murphy's, uh, there, we have a Calaveras Hydro project up there that we, we manage, and it's an opportunity to meet with, um, the other board members from Calaveras County and Utica and some of the areas up there, so, um, and we'll be doing some relicentury process in the near future, and so that's something that's, um, occurring. Uh, I, um, also went with many people here to Sun City, they had an installation of their, kind of their homeowners association, but it's a, it's even more than that, it's almost like Old Home Week, and they give a history of what's happened, yeah, I mean, I've been there a couple of years in a row.
Old Home.
Old Home Week, yeah, it was just, you know, they, they.
They're active adults, they're.
I know.
Not old house.
Old house, but, uh, you know, I talk about, uh, the things that they were planning and changes in the, um, in the golf course and, and things that they, they have future planning for, they thanked the many members, just as much as we here have in, in Roseville, of people who volunteer, do a lot of volunteer hours for the city, they do a lot of volunteer hours for their community in that area and, and making a difference, uh, but it was very much, uh, they were happy to have us there, um, our mayor, uh, did the oath of office for the, the incoming officers.
I think I swore myself in that night, that day, yeah.
Something like that, but it was, it was, it was very nice, but, um, a community that's very, um, they love Roseville, they like their community in their, where they live, but they like all of Roseville too, and they're, uh, very appreciative of, as we drove up, there was a lot of, uh, maintenance that we're doing on, uh, road resurfacing, and so that was a real positive thing there, and that's all I have to say right now, thank you.
Councilmember Manazha.
Well, like all of my council members, I also got to enjoy all the festivities for National Night Out, and, um, I got to ride in the SWAT tactical vehicle, which is a heck of a way to see the city, um, in a hundred and three degree heat, so thank you to the SWAT team for all you do and endure in that vehicle.
Is that a sauna?
Yeah, um, it was always good to eat my way through Roseville, as I have in past events, um, great Rupert floats and hot dogs and, and fun to be had, uh, I know, you know, not in that order, but, uh, great, great. You know, not in that order, but great, great neighborhood association turnout, it's just always great to see the community in spite of the heat. Everyone was in great, great form and just had great attitudes, and so. I also want to echo what Vice Mayor Bernascony said and just give an extra shout out to Gabe over at the police department. He did an amazing job coordinating a lot of moving parts and people, and everyone got where they needed to be on time, and everyone got home at a relatively early hour. So I know he worked really hard and really diligent on that Excel sheet and that map, so kudos to him for a job very well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, lessons learned. I started in Soler, the treeless John L. Sullivan Park, I think we need trees there next year, and I ended up in, with Councilwoman Rakucci and Rube Nelson Park, a very shady park, at 8 o'clock. I got to get the sun, the pattern of the sun better coordinated, but it was a great night, and, you know, somebody suggested maybe we have it on a day in which it's not triple digits, but I'm not sure what day that is. Anyway, Megan's here because she's watching my performance tonight because on August 16th, Friday, August 16th, we'll do State of the City, there will be, the chamber has a reception in the morning at Monk's Cellar, and then we'll go next door to Gold Fields for the State of the City. The next day, I'll be one of the judges in Boys and Girls State at the American Legion, and there's other things, but you know what? It's 8:10, and I think we'll be adjourned till August 21st. Thank you, everybody.